All right. Sorry for the delay, but we'll go ahead and we'll start with the meeting. So I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting of the Village of Skokie zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals is created by the statutes of the state of Illinois and by the ordinances of the Village of Skokie for a purpose of granting proper case relief from the strict terms of our zoning ordinances. The decision of this board to either grant or deny relief will be based upon the evidence presented to it and how that evidence is related to the standards for granting relief. All persons who have an interest in a case, either as a petitioner or as a member of the public, either supporting or opposing the petition, or as an independent witness, will be given a chance to speak on the record and to express his or her points of view. The zoning board of appeals is not a court of law, and therefore, we do not follow the strict rules of evidence. However, this hearing will be conducted in such a manner as to hear only competent evidence or statements. Questions as to procedure, interpretation, and of the admissibility of statements or evidence will be ruled upon by Corporation Counsel Tyler Kobelski, and his legal decisions will be binding upon this board. Certain cases require covenant running with the land. This will be prepared and recorded by the Village of Skokie Legal Department, and this is done at the petitioner's expense. Whether or not a covenant is required is a determination to be made by the Corporation Counsel at the conclusion of each individual case. If a covenant running with the land is required, it cannot, or will not, be prepared until our court reporter has returned to the zoning board of appeals a transcript of these proceedings. The Village of Skokie will notify each petitioner when the covenant has been prepared and is ready for signature. No building permits can be applied for or issued until a covenant is signed by the petitioner. Should a petition for variation be denied, or should covenant not be required, the board of trustees will authorize a refund of any required fees. Should it be necessary for the petitioner to request a continuance due to lack of preparation, a case continuation fee of one-half of the original application fee is due prior to the rehearing date. This request must be made before any testimony begins. And this is important, especially for this evening. All petitioners must receive a vote of the majority of the zoning board present in order to decide any matter under consideration. Our full complement is normally nine members, however, tonight's complement is six members, making four votes necessary to make a determination on a petition. So tonight, we have two cases. We have 2019-07Z, 7739 Canton Avenue, which will be presented by Commissioner Shaw, and 2019-08Z, 9431 Monticello Avenue, which will be presented by Commissioner Perlin. In both these cases, I'll ask Corporation Counsel if proper notice been served and notarized?
Notice is proper and correct.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Before we start with the first case for the evening, we have in our packet the minutes from the prior meeting on July 17th, in which we heard of the case 2019-06C, 4001 Davis Street. I'm sure everybody's had a chance to read the minutes from the prior meeting, and the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting as is?
So moved.
Okay, very good. Let's see. Sorry, a second. Commissioner Beverley, motions to approve. All in favor, voice vote, please?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody opposed? No? Thank you. Marlene? Thank you, as always. Okay. Okay, now we'll go ahead and we'll begin our meeting for the evening. Before we do that, since we have so many people here tonight, would everybody stand up so I can swear you all in? Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge or belief? Please answer in the affirmative?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody not answering the affirmative? No? Okay, thank you. Okay. If the petitioners would like to step forward for 2019-07Z, 7739 Canton Avenue, Commissioner Shaw will be presenting your case. So, Michael, go ahead. The floor is yours. The podium over there, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 2019-07G, 7739 Canton Avenue. Andreas Afshari requested variation to maintain a patio resulting in 53.6 percent lot coverage by impermeable surface rather than 50 percent maximum as required by section 118-122C of the Skokie Village Code in R2 Single Family District. Now, I have a petition statement. I am requesting for variance to approve for the permeable patio install on my property, which is 178 square foot over the allowable by the village. Please see supporting document for the alternative drainage method that should satisfy all parties involved. Please let me know if anything else is needed to resolve this matter. And signed by Andreas Afshari. You want me to read anything?
Yeah, you want to go ahead and read some of the important elements of the staff report into the record as well?
You mean from the fire department or?
Fire department down.
Forest Division, Community Development Department? I can read that one.
I tell you what, let's go ahead and let's stop for now.
Okay.
And anything else that comes out that would be pertinent will come out during our testimony here, I'm sure.
Okay.
So that'll be good for now. All right? Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Can we have your name and spell it for the record, please?
Andreas, first name. A-N-D-R-E-A-S. Last name Afshari. A-F-S-H-A-R-I. I'm the owner at 7739 Canton Avenue, single-family home.
Okay, great. Mr. Afshari, can you please tell us why we're here tonight?
We're here in the discrepancy with a permeable patio that was installed in the rear of the property where I reside.
Okay. Besides that, what other pertinent developments about this patio can you tell us? I mean, we understand that you had a patio installed in your?
It's a permeable patio. So the issue is it's 3.6 percent over the allowed coverage area for permeable surface. So I'm asking for a variance at 3.6 percent. The patio is in the rear, right here, and also on the rear of the driveway, right here, which was previously a concrete pad, right here, that's been chipped and broken up and mud over it, so I installed permeable pavers on this side also. I do have a three-year-old that I didn't want to fall into, or fall or trip, or it was a hazard for my three-year-old. At the time, I was two years old.
Commissioner Shaw, would you like to go ahead and give us your impressions on this case?
I'd like to ask him, see if he'd like to remove the driveway next to the sidewalk?
Which part? This part?
To reduce the complexity of the sidewalk.
This, right here?
This is not considered a sidewalk. I mean, this was a broken-up, there was concrete there before, prior to me removing it.
I have a question, though. Did you apply for a permit to put in the patio?
I submitted a permit. Due to my default, I installed it without obtaining a permit.
Did you apply for a permit?
I applied.
Okay, and it was denied, and you installed it?
I didn't know what the process was.
Okay.
At the time of applying for the permit. I thought I'd just apply for it. I didn't know it was denied. And then, go ahead.
And I think this is sort of the key here. The Civil Engineering Division, and I'm assuming you've been contacted about this, has proposed that NDS dry well is installed to counteract overage on the impermeable surfaces. So are you familiar with that? Have you corresponded with them on that? Brian, can you comment on that?
Well, in the packet, there's a proposed dry well from the petitioner that the civil engineer reviewed, and based on the square footage, the overage, the civil engineer felt comfortable with what was proposed for the overage on impermeable surfaces. But in the packet, there should be a copy of the detail on the dry well that they're proposing to install as part of the patio.
Can I just ask for clarification? So it's for the overage, so the dry well would be for the 3.6 percent?
Yes.
That's?
The three and a half, roughly, whatever percent. It's designed to take what is actually proposed, the overage on site.
Oh.
Yeah, it's designed for the exact, or possibly more. I don't think the civil engineer would recommend if it's designed to take the coverage that's proposed over or more so than that.
Well, so pardon me if this is a stupid question, but how do you get the water from the flat surfaces into the dry well? You have to?
Well, the patio, the current patio is permeable. Water drains through, and it's pitched into the grass. I would install, if need to be, a drain right here, where it would run off the driveway into the drain, into the dry well.
So I guess more specifically, installing that dry well, which was part of the, I think, I guess, your submission, the proposed dry well, if that was made a condition, would you be agreeable to that?
So the permit wasn't denied in 2017, and you did apply it in 2019, so you got the permit right now, right, to?
Well, this is all part of the process.
Yeah, it's an appeal more because it was, it's a variance from what would otherwise be permitted.
And you have no problem about those NDS dry well to be installed?
Not at all.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll have to, the civil engineer's reviewed what's been submitted. It'll have to be inspected by the civil engineer to make its taking to the site plan, to the site plan, any overage from the patio, any water in the area to bring it out into the backyard to the dry well.
Just a question. I know that it's not really addressed in the zoning ordinances. Does the permeable pavers make a difference with regard to the impermeable surface requirements, or no?
Yeah, based, the civil engineer does calculations based on the type of permeable patio with the type of base that's installed, and there's a credit given for the size. So a standard concrete patio is counted differently than a permeable paver patio with a much deeper base and gaps, and gaps and holes in the pavers to allow water to soak in and, you know, filter down.
So basically, the installation of these two permeable surfaces continues to exceed the required impermeable?
As?
Even with the permeable pavers?
Yes.
It's still way too much impermeable surface?
Three and a half, the 3.6 percent over.
Okay.
Yes.
But the dry well is intended to neutralize that overage?
Is there any other, I see some other members in the audience. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak in reference to this 2019-07Z? Or was everybody here for the next case? Everybody else is here for the next case? Okay, I see a lot of people shaking their heads, yes. Okay, good. Is there any other questions for the petitioner at all, at this point? Mr. Afshari, we have some, that being said, we have a couple conditions that staff would like to see if we were to act favorably on your request. One, obviously, is that the dry well must be installed, that we've been talking about. And also, too, that the sidewalk next to the driveway be removed or reduced to come closer in compliance with the 50 percent maximum impermeable surface requirement. So in other words, if the sidewalk next to the driveway is removed, okay?
But it's a permeable surface. There was, prior to me purchasing the property, that was a concrete pad right there.
Right. But it's all broken up, and there's still concrete in there, correct?
No, I took it out.
Oh, so there is?
There's no concrete at all.
There's no concrete at all?
Correct, yeah.
So in other words, the sidewalk next to the driveway?
Is a permeable surface.
Is a permeable surface? It's not solid concrete anymore? It's made, is it made out of the same substrate as what your patio is made out of?
Correct. It's the same exact material.
Okay, okay.
In other words, I guess it's been done already.
Right.
But this was factored into the civil engineering's analysis, too?
Yes.
Correct.
But then the dry well's supposed to neutralize?
The 3 percent.
Okay. All right, well, in that case, we only have to worry about the sidewalk next to the driveway, then, because it's already a permeable surface.
It's counted the same as the patio, as there's a credit that's given, it's counted as 50 percent. Staff felt that with the dry well design, the patio seemed to be more of a necessity in the location than the sidewalk. So one of the, it was thrown around during a staff meeting that if the sidewalk were to be removed, the coverage would come down another 1 percent approximately.
Okay.
So it's better to put that as a condition?
Well, it's, did you hear what staff just said about that, sir? If you were to remove that permeable surface, it would come down another 1 percent, which would get you closer to the 50 percent mandate.
I totally understand, but with the solution I provided, I'm favorably able to provide a solution to this issue, whether it's 1 percent or 3 percent.
Right. But still, okay, we're like, let's look at this from the standpoint that it's 53.6 percent that you currently have. You have to get down to 50. There's other mitigating circumstances here where the patio permit was denied. 2019, it was discovered that a patio and walk along the driveway were installed without a permit. So we would like, in order for you to be a little bit more accommodating to us, in order for us to grant your request, this is things that staff says needs to happen.
Can I ask another question? I'm sorry.
Of course.
What if the size of the patio was reduced, Brian? How much of that L on the patio would have to come off to equal the sidewalk there? Since it's pavers? How many square feet?
I think the sidewalk was counted as the patio and the step were, the patio 302, the sidewalk 90 approximately.
So a reduction in the patio?
Actually, I'm sorry, that's about 302 on the patio and 170 approximately. The 170 comes down to half, that's 74. It's, the patio's roughly double the size of the sidewalk, approximately.
So if they halved the patio, then they could keep the sidewalk? And come within requirements?
Say, I ask you that one more time?
If the patio was, you said the patio is double the size of the sidewalk?
Approximately.
So if they halved the patio, they could keep the sidewalk and be within the requirements? If the patio was made smaller?
It depends how much of the patio is removed.
Right. That's my question to you. How much of the patio would need to be removed to come in to compliance?
Can I say something?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Afshari, go ahead.
If I eliminate, if I, the side, the sideside, the reason why I have the side side, there's nothing else I could put there. You know, if I put grass, it's just going to die. It's going to, my son plays in the backyard. You know, I don't have a bigger backyard. You know, my son utilizes all this space. If I make the original, the permeable sidewalk that I installed to the original concrete pad that was there existing, is that sufficient enough?
Well, no, that would actually make it worse, to reconvert it to the regular, the initial, the concrete pad that was there.
Just remove the sides.
Just remove the sides in here. So right here, this was the original. Existing when I bought the house.
Yeah, the original concrete pad was smaller than the permeable sidewalk that's there now. So even if that's removed some, we will get closer to compliance.
Right. Right, which is what I've been saying all along, which is part of the recommendation that staff had in order to look upon this favorably, is to have that section removed.
Ours is to take the entire section out.
Brian, if they were to install a dry well right now, that would only, you said it would only be, what, 3 percent over, technically?
Well, the dry well that's designed is to take the overage based on the percentage, to take whatever overage in that area.
Which is 3 percent.
Three and a half percent, 3.6, I think.
So it's like a 50-gallon dry well?
So, they're 3 percent over. Is this a make or break?
3.6, actually.
3.6, I mean, come on.
What you're saying is that that's supposed to take care of the overage, and the dry well's going in for sure, you're suggesting that you?
Yeah, who cares? I mean, it takes care of the?
I don't think it's who cares, but I see your point.
If you're putting in the dry well, it's taking care of that. So why are we going back and forth about?
The dry well is really just?
If I may, Commissioner Arden. Brian? Okay. So the dry well only takes away 3 percent, correct?
It's designed to accommodate the overage, three and a half percent.
Three and a half percent. So even if he left in the sidewalk along the driveway, even though it's a permeable surface, that would still be, the dry well will not be enough to get it under 50 percent, which is a requirement?
If the sidewalk was removed?
Right. No, if the sidewalk stayed, the dry well by itself will not be enough to get the petitioner under 50 percent.
No, the dry well's designed to have the overage that's on site right now.
For how many inches of range?
Without having to remove the permeable sidewalk that the petitioner wants to leave?
As proposed, our civil engineer was comfortable with the design of the dry well to take the 3 percent overage, to help get it out from the yard to the back into a dry well, into the backyard, stored and drained to the back.
Okay. But like you said, just 3 percent, though, correct?
It's three and a half, whatever it's?
Whatever my overage is.
Yes.
Okay. And that still takes into consideration leaving the sidewalk next to the driveway in place?
Correct. It's, staff felt, not the engineering division, this community development department's staff felt, if we can get the sidewalk, which is not near the back door of the house, out, we get down closer to the code, the intent of the ordinance, 50 percent.
Understood.
Sounds reasonable.
Any more questions for the petitioner or for staff on this? Mr. Afshari, is there anything else that, or Afshari, is there anything else you'd like to?
No, I just thank you for your guys' time tonight.
Okay. Did you install this patio, all this impermeable surface yourself, or did you have a contractor do it?
No, I had, me and a crew of my guys, they work under me.
You and a crew of guys are, what's, what line of business are you in? You're in landscape?
Real estate, real estate, but I have different, friends of mine who are tradesmen to help me, assist me with doing this, under the supervision of an architect.
Oh, okay. All right. So like a landscape architect, or some, somebody that's within your circle of friends in the real estate business?
So I had, my father was an architect?
Okay.
Who was on the job site with me, managing the project.
Okay. All right. Any other?
Do we know what we're actually doing right now? We know the dry well's going in, do we?
The dry well's got to go in. If there's no dry well, then it's a move.
What about the other, the conditions should be, both conditions should be in?
Right, the conditions?
That's how I feel.
Pardon me?
I think the both conditions should be in.
You feel that both conditions should be in? Commissioner Shaw, who is presenting your case, and who will eventually make the motion whether to approve or deny your request, has said that we need to go with the staff recommendation, which is the sidewalk next to the driveway be removed. Okay?
Would you feel more comfortable if I added a second dry well? I mean, we're talking about 3.6 percent. This is where my child plays every day. And if I were to install grass or whatever, it would die. There's a big concrete brick garage, 15-foot brick garage that's been there 80 years, 90 years, okay? I didn't do anything, I didn't, I took an existing piece of concrete that was damaged, okay? It's nothing, I think we're talking about 3.6 percent. And if I needed to install an additional dry well, three or four, I mean, I'm not asking for a lot. I mean, for you to say, for me to take my existing patio out, for what reason? The drawings that the engineer provided are sufficient enough that this, it was, the engineers approved it.
Well, if the engineer approved it, then how come the request to remove the sidewalk next to the driveway is part of the recommendation?
Oh, I'm sorry, my engineer, my engineer.
Well, no, I think civil engineering did approve that for the village. The staff recommendation was to add the second thing, so there's a distinction.
Yeah, our civil engineer recommended that based on the overage, the proposed dry well would suffice. He's looking at the coverage and the impermeable surface, the overage. He felt comfortable with the proposal.
Right, the staff had added that second requirement, but the civil engineering department was happy with?
Just the dry well?
Just the dry well.
Okay. Well, it's up to Commissioner Shaw, because it's his motion.
Right, it's his motion.
So Brian, if he installed extra dry well, it would make any difference? I mean, I just want to make your opinion.
Possibly if something at the southeast corner of the house was installed near where the driveway and the southeast corner of the house is, to make sure the water is getting from the side, I don't, do you know, from the southeast corner, do you have a downspout and gutter at that location?
I have downspouts and gutters everywhere.
If something maybe at the southeast corner of the house, I'll show you on the screen. So if something were installed here to make sure the water, if there's a gutter here, the water was coming out to get out here?
There is.
There's something, isn't there a sidewalk here?
No, there's no sidewalk, this is from all this, this gutter comes out here.
To where? The plan shows a sidewalk there.
When this was broken up, this was broken, there was, you see, a drain, a drain, so the water comes out.
Staff would, if there's a condition with that, that the water from this gutter, downspout, comes out to the private property, not into the alley, but on the private property in this location, staff will feel more comfortable. We want to guarantee that this water here is coming out to here.
Okay, so Brian, you heard, they've sort of modified the staff recommendation.
Okay.
But can I say something? We go back to the staff, okay? The staff, the staff's not an engineer. The staff's not an architect, okay? We're going back and we're asking staff, correct? They're not, I proposed, the proposal I brought was from an engineer and an architect.
Sir, they're not here to testify tonight. Our staff, I, please don't belittle our staff. They're extremely experienced.
No, I totally understand, but I'm not trying to do anything like that. I'm just saying, if a civil engineer and an architect provided the specs, right, and ran the calculations, right, the experience, and we're talking about a staff that's not licensed or any of that?
The ordinance passed by the Village of Trustees is very clear that it's 50 percent. I don't think that the private architects' plans are, were clearly not in compliance with the ordinances that have been passed.
And I totally understand that, okay? I'm not trying, I'm not here trying to cause a scene or any of that. All I'm asking is, whatever needs to be done on my part, I'm willing to do, okay? And if I have to go above and beyond, I will do that.
Okay, so I will read in this to condition then?
Well, there's, I want to clarify, because Brian had proposed an alternative to the other staff condition that was also practical, and, you know, I hope you understand that there's been for decades a lot of concerns in Skokie about water drainage and flooding and things like that, and I think that's why we tend to be, you know, kind of picky about those things, and maybe go a little bit above and beyond. But Brian, why don't you explain what you're proposing as an alternative to what's in the package?
So if there's a guarantee, another condition, that any stormwater from the southeast corner of the house runs out underground and has to disperse with a pop-up south of the driveway and east of the alley on private property, that there's a guarantee that stormwater in the southeast corner runs out, is directed towards the rear yard, not into the alley, on private property, off the alley, and south of the driveway. So if that sidewalk, on the plan, that the hatch mark shows the sidewalk going to the alley?
So, and?
So maybe part of that comes in, the pop-up comes up off the alley, that there's a guarantee that that stormwater from the southeast corner runs out underground, pops up in from the alley on private property, south of the driveway. There's a condition that we're getting that stormwater, we're taking care of the north patio here with the drain running down the driveway to the back dry well, we're taking care of the stormwater now from the southeast corner of the house. We're taking care of the stormwater now from the southeast corner of the house, running back under the sidewalk to a pop-up that pops up on private property, south of the driveway, on private property before the alley. So that stormwater is getting out away from the neighbor to the south rear yard. There's a guarantee that that has to, if it's there, it's there. But I want a condition.
What does that do with condition one?
I'm sorry?
What does that do with condition one? Is it a replace condition?
No, 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 the drywell is still there.
Yeah, the drywell has to get installed.
The staff is changing their recommendation. So civil engineering says drywell, the staff wants to add a little something extra. The breaking up of the sidewalk is taken out and this is put in place. And Mike, if you are going to make a motion to approve of that condition, it might be easier when you get to that second condition to have Brian state it for the record. And, but before we do that, I have to ask, Mr. Afshari.
Yes.
How do you feel about all this?
That's fine.
Okay.
When I said first condition, I meant the condition about removing the sidewalk, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah, in place of, yeah, in place of condition one, there's a guarantee that the stormwater, downspout gutter at the southeast corner of the house will get directed underground to a pop-up in the rear yard that discharges, you know, on private property, south of the driveway. And we'll let engineering determine the exact location. Because per the plan, that hatched area looks like it goes almost right up to the alley.
Okay. All right. Well, that's good, that would alleviate the concerns. You can go ahead and you can keep your sidewalk next to the driveway, which, you know, which I think.
Right, well, we want to do everything to avoid, you know, having to undo things.
Yeah, well, that's, if we can, that's preferable, absolutely.
So the stormwater southeast get directed into the private property?
Right, and so what'll happen is I think when you read that part of the motion, I would just defer to Brian and, you know, have Brian read that into the record, because I'm not sure I get it right.
Yeah. Would that, is that admissible, counsel?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great.
I guess I just want to ask, does anyone want to vote individually on the conditions? Or is everyone in agreement with that?
It's a good point.
Because certain people might disagree with that route. Let me ask it this way, does anyone want to vote individually? It sounds like no.
No, it sounds like we're kind of wrapping this all up into one neat tidy package. Mr. Afshari is on board with it and staff has made the recommendation that I think we'll take care of the, any additional impermeable surface concerns and considerations. So I think we can go ahead and go with it as is.
Okay.
So, anything else?
I just have one question for the petitioner. What do you do in real estate?
I own multi, I'm a broker, I own apartment buildings.
Okay, have you ever worked on a construction project before?
Correct.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, you have?
Yeah.
So you were aware of the permitting process when you've worked on con.
No, I, I.
I'll be the first one to admit, I dropped the ball on that one. I did.
Okay, I don't understand that, but I guess we'll vote.
It's a good point. Any other questions for the petitioner? Anything else you'd like to say, sir?
No.
Okay. But you have agreed to the conditions that we have just mentioned here. Okay. All right. If there's nothing else then the chair will go ahead and entertain a motion.
Motion to grant a variance. Mr. Chairman, I propose the following in the granting of variance to the petitioner as follow. NDS Afshari requests a variation. Is the owner of the lot describing the case number twenty nineteen dash oh seven Z for the property located at seventy seven thirty nine Canton Avenue, Skokie, Cook County, Illinois, that said a lot is a planted lot of record and is abitied by a single family on east-west, that a determination has been made in which petitioner request is consistent with the majority of the finding of fact as stated in the Village of Skokie zoning chapter. I therefore propose that variance be granted to the petitioner for giving failure to comply with the requirement of the zoning ordinance of the Village of Skokie as amended as an impermeable surface, that the petitioner be granted the variance twenty nineteen dash oh seven Z seventy seven thirty nine Canton Avenue. NDS Afshari requests a variance to maintain a patio resulting in fifty-three point six lot coverage by impermeable surface rather than fifty percent maximum as required by section one eighteen dash one twenty-two C of the Skokie Village Code in R two single-family district. And with the condition, the proposed NDS drywall must be installed and is another install. I request the staff to read it in.
A downspout at the southeast corner of the house must discharge to the southeast corner of the lot via underground pipe and pop-up per the engineering division's approval.
That all of the codes and ordinance of the Village of Skokie shall be fully and strictly complied with.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve with the two conditions as noted by Commissioner Shaw and staff. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Shaw moving, we have Commissioner Perlin seconding. Okay, the chair will go ahead and call the roll. Commissioner Perlin?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw? Yes. Commissioner Beverly?
No.
Commissioner Solovy?
Aye.
Commissioner Arden, because the chair goes last.
Abstain.
Abstain. The chair, the chair will go ahead and vote aye on this. So we have, basically, we do have four affirmative votes, which gets you right under the wire. Okay? So in a, in matter of twenty nineteen dash zero seven Z, the motion to approve with two conditions has been passed.
Thank you.
I just cleaning your teeth. From here on out, Corporation Counsel will tell you what you need to know.
We'll prepare the covenant running with the land, it should be ready in a couple of weeks. Are you the property owner?
Correct.
Then when it's ready, we'll notify you. And once you sign it, then you can start working on getting the permits.
Awesome, thank you guys, have a wonderful night.
Okay. I'm sorry it took a while, folks, but we did get it ironed out and I think everybody's concerns have been addressed. We've walked away with a happy petitioner and at least I think he was happy. He was able to keep his variation to maintain, so. So we'll go ahead and we'll move forward with the next case, the twenty nineteen dash zero eight Z, ninety-four thirty-one Monticello Avenue. As the petitioner steps up to the podium, I see staff working on something there.
I'll get the floor plan, site plan.
I can start reading.
Yeah. Is it okay if Commissioner Perlin presents a case?
I'll be done in one minute.
Chair, we have hard copies, do you want us to hand out hard copies?
Please bring them forward.
Thank you. I'll start reading.
Yeah. Corporation Counsel, is there anything you'd like to add about what the petitioner has passed out here? We'll just amend it as part of the packet.
Is it not in our packet or something?
Some of it might be, but it's shrunken. I know some of this isn't though.
Okay, we can allow it in the record, so long as Brian doesn't find any issues with it.
Yeah. Maybe we should have staff look at it real quick.
Yeah, maybe we should.
I'll tell you what, sir, you just passed out the packet, that's fine, let us review it real quick. Once staff has had a chance to take a look at it, then we'll go ahead and we'll have it be admitted into the record if he sees nothing wrong with it. But in the meantime, we'll let, for the sake of brevity, we'll let Commissioner Perlin go ahead and present the case. So Richard, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is case two thousand and nineteen dash eight Z. The address is ninety-four thirty-one Monticello. Nicholas Fatakis, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, and Taylor Nora request a variation in order to construct a one and two-story addition resulting in the continuation of a three-foot, one-inch north side yard and a three-foot, five-inch south side yard rather than the six-foot minimum as required by section one eighteen dash one twenty-four parentheses six A of the Skokie Village Code in an R one single-family district. The petitioner is requesting a variation in order to construct a one and two-story addition. We've read that summary. Now I'm going to talk about some of the commissions. And the Appearance Commission approved the petitioner's request on August fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The Fire Department has no objections. They note that hardwired smoke detectors will be required throughout the existing residence and the proposed addition. Due to the size of the addition, a fire sprinkler will be required throughout the entire residence. Forestry Division also requires that tree protection fencing be required for the front yard trees for this construction project. There is one large ash directly in the front yard and a small service berry to the north of the entrance that require protection. The Community Development Department does not recommend the petitioner's request to construct the one and two-story addition resulting in the continuation of the existing three-foot, one-inch north side yard and three-foot, five-inch south yard be granted. They note the residence was constructed in nineteen forty-one prior to the current side yard requirements. Even though the lot gets thinner as it gets deeper, a forty-six foot wide addition can still be constructed on site without a variation. The proposed addition would not even be allowed to be constructed on a property zoned R two with the less restrictive four-foot minimum side yard requirement. They note in nineteen eighty-seven, the Zoning Board of Appeals did grant a variation to construct a second floor addition above the existing attached garage footprint. I am now going to read into the record a statement by the petitioner. This is a letter essentially from the petitioner, it's on the letterhead of the law firm that employs him. The petitioner's statement is offered in support of the requested variations to reduce the required north side and south side building setbacks at ninety-four thirty-one Monticello. The letter says Evanston, Illinois, for post office purposes it may be, but obviously for zoning purposes, it's Skokie. More specifically, we are seeking permission to extend existing building walls straight back on the subject lot, maintaining the existing side setback conditions on both sides of the subject lot in order to accommodate a proposed one and two-story rear home addition. We understand and respect the rules set forth by the Village of Skokie zoning ordinance. However, the enforcement of the applicable zoning requirements creates practical hardships and/or particular difficulties directly related to unique characteristics of the subject property. The hardships and particular difficulties are specifically created by, one, the non-conforming footprint of the existing single-family home, two, the narrowing of the subject lot at its rear, they reference a survey, and three, the lack of alley access. We request the board consider the following criteria as part of its review for the proposed variations. The limitation of the use of the property is due to physical, topographical and geologic features specific to the subject property. The existing single-family home provides a north side setback of three foot, one inch and a south side setback of three foot, five inches. Both existing side setback dimensions are non-conforming under the Skokie zoning ordinance. The subject zoning lot also narrows at its rear. The lot measures sixty-two feet, five inches in width along Monticello Avenue and fifty-eight point three seven feet in width along its rear property line, again referencing the survey. Vehicle access to the subject property comes from the front of the lot because there is no access to a public alley at the rear. The requested variations will allow the proposed rear home addition to follow existing building wall lines straight back, maintaining the existing three-foot, one-inch north side yard setback and the existing three-foot, five-inch south side yard setback conditions already established on the subject lot. Without a variance, we would be unreasonably restricted from constructing a rear home addition that follows the existing building wall lines and maintains continuity with the existing single-family home. We did not create the existing non-conforming conditions the proposed variations are intended to overcome. Our request is not based on economic reasons, but rather on providing a practical and functional design for the proposed one and two-story home addition that would follow the building wall lines of the existing two-story, single-family home. The proposed building design maintains the existing front setback and exceeds the rear setback requirement for the subject lot. Moreover, even with the proposed addition, the total amount of them, it says impervious, but impermeable is what's intended, surface on site is reduced below the existing total, net increase of permeable surface. As the property owners and applicants, we did not create the necessity for the hardships. The property as platted narrows at its rear. The existing single-family home is already non-conforming with respect to both the north side and the south side building setbacks. The proposed variations allow us to design a rear home addition that follows the existing building wall lines and otherwise maintains the character of the home and the surrounding area. Our request is the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. The proposed building design maintains both existing side setback dimensions, parenthetically noting three-foot, one-inch north and three-foot, five-inch south setbacks. The home addition was specifically designed to not further encroach into either of the subject lot's side setbacks. Moreover, only a portion of the home addition incorporates a second floor. The bulk of the addition is only one story in height. Lastly, the proposed site plan maintains over forty feet of open rear setback space. Our request will not be injurious to public health, safety or welfare. Neighboring properties have been improved with rear home additions in a similar manner. The proposed rear home addition maintains the existing front facade in its entirety, maintains the large landscape backyard and in doing so maintains the general character of the subject property and the surrounding neighborhood. Our property possesses several unique characteristics, not generally applicable to similarly situated properties within the Village of Skokie. We do not have access to a rear public alley, the subject zoning lot narrows at the rear. The existing single-family home is already non-conforming with respect to both the required north and south side setbacks. Taken together, these unique characteristics create hardships and practical difficulties in meeting the current zoning requirements. Thank you for your consideration of our request. Sincerely, Nicholas Fatikas and Taylor Nora. So that's the letter, we've, I've read into the record some of the village reports. And I also want to note for the record, if I can find it.
Sorry, Commissioner Perlin.
I want to note the emails, yeah. So there are emails from neighbors and I'm not going to read all the emails, but I will note the address and the name of the person. Ninety-four oh eight Monticello, which is to the south but not directly. James Carlson in support. And then ninety-four fifteen, also to the south but not directly. Solita and Eugene Murphy on Monticello. Ninety-four oh two Monticello, also further south. Charlene Mitchell in support. So far, all these letters have been in support, if I'd neglected to mention that. Thirty-six thirty-seven Foster, which is sort of kitty-corner down the street. Northwest. Northwest, that's correct. Jim Ford in support. And then ninety-four forty-four, which is I guess a couple houses north. Michael Inzatari in support. And this is Dan Shermerhorn at ninety-four forty-seven, also not directly north of the property, but north of the property, in support. And Linda Hickey at ninety-four oh nine, to the south of the property on the same side of the street, also in support. And we have, this is, we have a letter, I think, from this address, ninety-four forty-four, which is across the street and to the north. And it's Molly Maloney Inzatari. Maloney Inzatari in support. And then 9419, which is to the south on the same side of the street, Jennifer Reese Buntain in support. And so, those are the emails. I've read them into the record, and I think that completes the initial presentation.
And you're probably ready for a tall drink of water after all that verbiage there. Very thorough, Commissioner Perlin. Thank you very much, as always.
So, the only thing that I could see, I didn't really check the elevations in regards to the site plan. On the handed-out packet, it says three foot, seven inches for the south side setback.
Okay.
On the submitted packet, and on the request for the variation, it's three foot, five inches. That's a south setback.
So, this would, this would actually be less than?
Correct. This is an increase in the side yard by two inches. That's the only difference I could see on the plans.
Right. Okay. Which, which, as long, as long as it's not in excess of what the, of what the petitioner is requesting, then we're okay. In other words, if it's three foot, seven, that's better than it being three foot, two, or three foot, three in the site plan, which the petitioner would have to refile.
So, it depends where you're measuring it to.
Yeah, the closest point on the original plan said three-five for the south setback. Now, it says three foot, seven inches.
Okay. All right. Do we note it? Is there anything else you wanted to say as far as the packet's concerned? I believe everything that we, in the packet that you've handed out, is already in the packet that we received. I think with the exception of this one that's noted, A3.0. I think that's the only one that wasn't in our packet. So, but anyway, while we get to that. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Good. May we have your name and spell it for the record, please, sir?
Sure. Nick, last name is Fatikas, spelled F as in Frank, T as in Tom, I, K-A-S. I'm an attorney but also the homeowner and applicant, along with my wife.
Okay. And your wife is?
Taylor Nora.
All right. Very good. N-O-R-A?
N-O-R-A.
Just like it says in our documentation. All right. Very good. And who's this fine young gentleman who handed out the packet earlier?
My name is Ben West.
Yeah, please step, please step up to the podium, sir.
I'm Ben West, the project architect. I'm a registered architect in the state of Illinois. I work at Axios Architects, 188 North Wells in Chicago.
Okay. So, Ben West, and that's as in the direction, W-E-S-T?
As straightforward as it sounds.
All right. Very good. Okay. Very good. Please tell us why we're here tonight, sir.
Sure. Thank you. Again, my wife, Taylor, and I own the property at 9431 Monticello. We, well, my wife actually grew up in the neighborhood, and our first home coming out of the city was about three blocks away at 9300 Lincolnwood. So, for the last seven or eight years, this has become our, our home. And the opportunity to buy the house on Monticello came up earlier this summer, and we, and we jumped on it. The lot, we found out, is, is unique. It has 62 and a half feet of frontage along Monticello. It's 130.8 feet deep, and then it narrows to 58.37 feet wide at the rear. And again, it's shown on the survey, but our south side lot line runs at an angle that narrows front to back. And the property is improved with the center entry colonial with an attached garage. Based on our review with staff, again, it was confirmed that the home was built in 1941, and although the home was absolutely well-maintained over the years, it was never expanded beyond the original footprint. To that point, the very, a variation was granted in 1987 that allowed the prior homeowners to add a bedroom over the attached garage. That addition followed the existing front and south side setbacks so that the wall lines went straight up and back. And again, that's currently our, our master bedroom. As it exists today, the home's first floor has a living room, dining room, the original kitchen, and a small breakfast deck. It does not have a first-floor family room, and we've already come to learn that with two young children, it would be great to have that additional space on that first floor. So, we are proposing, again, to add some living space to the home with a rear one and two-story addition. Our project architect is here to discuss the plan in further detail, but to give a little bit of an overview, the proposed first-floor addition would incorporate a mudroom and a kitchen, an eating area, and then a true family room. And the second-floor portion of the addition would be a bit smaller in scale and oriented toward the south side of the home. And I do actually have a photo. And again, that was, it's designed to really follow the width of the addition that was done in 1987. And if I could just reference, I know the photos were submitted as part of our packet, actually after the fact, just
Is this on a computer?
Oh, never mind. So, if you could, so, the first photo is just a full perspective of the rear of the property, and then what's the left side of the property is where the addition, the two-story component or portion of the addition would be.
The left side looking to the back.
So, Nick, the, the north side is going to be the one-story?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We, we did that for two reasons. One, based on just the, where the, the house situates, it was that much snugger on that side of the property.
This is why I asked the question.
And so, we, we positioned it intentionally. We actually initially had a kitchen on that side, and our architect said, listen, if we flip it to the other side, we could run plumbing. It actually makes better sense. Let's push that to the, the south side of the lot because there's a substantial amount of space.
Huge amount of space.
I want to say it's over 17 feet, building to building, on the south side of the lot. And actually, the homeowner is here. It's off.
And the north side of the lot, if you eat too much dinner, you can't get through.
Exactly. And actually, we really did think about that because that is the side that the existing kitchen is on right now. So, to accommodate that and do our best to make that side of the addition less overpowering, we're moving the kitchen completely to the other side of the house.
So, while my microphone is on, I'm going to restate what I said before, just to make sure it's on the record in case it wasn't. Not just because I like to hear myself talk.
Or whatever accused you of that, Mr. Commissioner Perlin?
That is that the one-story portion is on the north side, which is the much smaller space.
Correct.
And the south side, which has really a ton of room, is going to be the second story.
Exactly.
And you've got all the neighbors to the south of you that, you know, are applauding it. Interestingly, conspicuously, I think it's 9437. Is that the one to the north? That person didn't write a letter.
You know, we've, we've maintained a cordial relationship. They've wished us luck when we were moving in. We've talked to them. We've waved to them in the driveway. We haven't been asked to provide any more information. We're, we're assuming, and again, it's a strong word, there's no objection. I think they would have voiced opposition if, if there was some.
And you would recognize them if they're in the audience tonight.
We certainly would. Right. And they aren't here. So, and again, we did send out our notices. We know it didn't come back received. We're confident they received it. And again, since the notice was posted on that front tree that you talked about, we've had a handful of neighbors stop by and just ask. We've talked through the plans, and that's really been the end of it.
We're firmly planted in the front yard with our kids most nights, too.
Well, it's just, it was, when I, when I first read it, and, you know, I was conflicted about it, but when you look at it, it looks very narrow, but it's narrow anyway. In other words, nothing you can do about that right now.
And truly, there's nothing on that side. There's a high fence, a lot of weed overgrowth.
Can you not cut me off?
I'm sorry.
I mean, I am, I have a client.
But there's really nothing you're blocking.
So, there's no house to the north that's being blocked, plus it's one-story.
By the addition, correct. The addition would extend beyond what the house is there currently, and they have a fence and some shrubbery.
And it looks like it's almost doubling in terms of east-to-west dimension. Would that be approximately correct?
Yes. It's about, I think we're between 26 feet and 24 feet existing, and we're doing the same to mirror that behind the house.
And, you know, it's hard to visualize, and as you point out, actually, a number of times in the letter, there's no alley. And so, I, I was trying to visualize if there were any other houses. I went up and down the street a bunch of times that, that go that far back. And I, and this is a subjective consideration, but I was just trying to visualize that. And I don't know if you can shed some light on that. Some of the houses look like they extend back a bit. Some of them don't.
If I can.
When Brian gave me a pretty picture here, that should answer the question.
And this is coming from the map that was mailed to us as part of the submittal. It's not showing too, too well. And there are some darker copies. So, this is the map that was shown, that was provided us for our, our public notice. And there are a handful of neighbors on Monticello who do have front driveways that go to a, a garage at the rear of the property. But I believe there's only three or four of the 18 properties that front on Monticello. And again, I do, we just handed out a copy.
Right. I know one looked like it might have had an addition that actually did notch in a little. I don't know what the reason was for that to the north. I can't, it might be one of the people who wrote the letter.
There's also a new construction home that has a drive on the same side of the street, just two, two lots north of us.
Right.
As well.
Yeah. I, um...
Most of the houses on that block have all added rear additions that have continued the property line straight back.
Okay. So, that's...
One of the last houses that haven't.
Right. We, we counted on our side of the block, we're one of two homes that fronts onto Monticello that hasn't seen a rear addition yet. And that's shown, again, in the aerial. All of those homes have rear improvements, again, on our side of the block.
Right. I know some of the homes look like they had substandard side setbacks. Some of them didn't, you know, just, again, subjectively.
And again, we're presuming that those additions, I'm not aware of a history of variations, I think were the lot that was built wider on, on our lot. And by comparison, a number of those neighbors have followed building wall lines, but not necessarily triggered a need for a variation. So, I, I was explaining that, again, we're, our second floor is intended to have a walk-in closet and a bathroom, a master bathroom behind it, and it would only be that, that rectangle of the addition that was on the, this portion, which, which, again, is above the garage that was constructed in 1987. The issue, long story short, of why we're here tonight is because our existing home is non-conforming with respect to both of the existing north and side setbacks. Our existing north side setback is at three feet, one inch, and our existing south side setback is just over three feet, six inches. And again, I think to Brian's point, the plan that's being presented tonight has the update that the architect and the surveyor verified as the existing correct dimension. So, actually, we picked up about an inch and a half from the original five-inch dimension that we saw it. So, in order to allow us to build the addition so that it runs straight back with the existing ball, uh, wall lines, we're seeking variations, again, to continue the, the existing dimension on both the north and south side of the property. And except for the non-conforming side setbacks, the proposed addition will otherwise meet code, and that's with respect to height, the total floor area, and the lot's rear setback, which we put a lot of emphasis on because we do have two young kids. We've already gotten pretty accustomed to using that backdoor, that backyard space. And what we're fearful of is if we have to narrow the addition, in order to pick up that, that additional floor area, we'd be pushing further back into the lot, and we don't want to do that. We, that's not consistent with the other rear additions in our neighborhood. If you look at the aerial again, you see backyards, rectangular backyards up and down the block, and we want to be a part of that as well. We want to have that same pattern that those other homes do. And again, we did, I know it was noted earlier, but we did appear before the Village's Appearance Committee last week, and we were recommended, or we were approved based on the proposed design and building materials. I know that the, and again, the commissioner already spoke to the standards and read into the record our petitioner's statement. If I could just show a handful of more photos to give a little bit of context to the backyard and what's there today, I think it would be helpful, especially on the north side of the lot, to show the existing landscaping that's there that would remain as part of the program.
You're entirely within your right to do so.
Thank you, sir.
And in the meantime, I've noticed, don't think I haven't noticed, that some of the people in the audience have kind of crept closer to the podium, and I will allow you to go up and, you know, have, say what you have to say on the record.
Sorry, we were chatting.
Oh, that's, no, no, that's all right. That's all right.
Commissioner Brian is just assuring you that if you'd like to speak, you'll have the opportunity.
No, no, you're fine. If I can just kind of give a little summary here, overview, this is a picture facing north. The exist, this is our current kitchen window, and this is the home that's immediately north of us. Why we took this picture is a few reasons. One, there's quite a bit of landscaping separating two properties, and there's no window that would be blocked by the new addition. Additionally, you can kind of see it right through here. There's a bay window, so there's probably two or three window panes that would have a view of what we're proposing. And then also, here's a view from further back on our yard. These, this is all existing on our side of the property line. The trees, though, that are probably 40-plus feet in height, there's a series of four or five, are all on our neighbor's property. So, our program maintains those. We're not losing those. This is the existing, basically, we call it a landscape wall, but it's a landscape wall separating us from the neighbors to the north. Again, we think it's important to see this because when it comes to whether we're diminishing light and air or quality of life, there already is quite a, a natural buffer between the properties, even with the reduced setback. It's our position that we're not creating any more encroachment or diminution. And then I also, just for context, snapped another picture, just more of a straight-on photo of that same landscape buffer. And then a little bit later in the evening, this was taken approximately 5:45 on July 22, where you start seeing the shade, and it's actually darker on our side, just because of the way the trees hang. So, again, we're just trying to, I guess, overemphasize that we don't believe we're creating a, a new impact unduly on our neighbor to the north. To the contrary, all of what you're looking at would remain, with the exception of some of the ground cover on our side of the lot, which will be replaced at the rear of the lot as part of our program.
No, it's fine. You, you want to put things in a proper context, which is appreciated. And a couple of those photos were not part of our packet, so they, so they are helpful.
I have, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Should we put those in the record?
They, they were submitted to staff, I believe, on July 23rd or 22nd.
I mean, we do, we do have some photos as part of our, as part of our packet, but those last two, I believe, were not part of it.
I also, I also previously sent email copies of all the, the 24 photos that, that we took.
Okay.
So, I can reprovide those, or we could reference those.
No, that's, that's not necessary. I mean, it's, it's just as well that...
It's on video, too.
I think the explanation, the explanation, though, gives it a lot of context. Because when I look at the pictures, there's no real orientation.
Right. You just see pictures.
It's recorded on there as well.
Right.
Right. So, that's, if it's recorded on there, it's in the record.
It's there.
Absolutely. Okay, good. Is there anything else you'd like to say at this point, or would you like some of these other fine people to get up to the podium and speak?
I'll yield the floor. If there are any questions of, of us or of the architect, whether it's design standards, we're prepared to answer those, but we'll, we'll yield the floor to the neighbors.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yep. Okay. Whoever would like to be first, please go ahead and approach the podium.
Well, you, you don't have to.
You don't, you don't have to speak if you don't want to.
Well, I'm going to speak, but I don't want to go to a microphone.
Unfortunately, there's a recording device that's at the podium with that microphone, so.
Hello.
Good evening, sir.
How are you?
May we have your name and spell it so we have it for the record?
Yes.
If you want to tell us where your address is.
Uh, I'm Jonathan Buntain, B-U-N-T-A-I-N. My wife was referenced in one of the emails in support of.
Okay.
We are arguably the most affected. We are to the immediate south, so the side of the pictures that you didn't see. I believe it was referenced by Nick. Our house is situated to the south of our lot, so we have quite a bit of space between us and them. I'm sure some, you know, some aerial shots would show that. We did an addition about 10 years ago with air room. We did something similar to what they're doing and matched our roof line and went straight back, three-story addition, very similar layout to what they're doing, except we did all three stories. Matching the, you know, the house is a natural thing that a lot of people try to do. Keeps the roof line simple. Everything's symmetrical. You know, the house is already there. The house is already as wide as it is. There's no, you know, there's no one doing that. And, you know, from our perspective, I, I have a picture that I sent in to Nick, too, from our dining room that would be the most affected. So, along from behind, if you imagine on the pictures, to the south side, we, our house, on the very first picture in that packet, our house would be about where that line that says site plan is. That's roughly where our house is. And there, right behind the existing building is a trellis that covers an air conditioner well and some bushes, and then there's a screened-in porch. So, from our perspective, the house is already there. It already goes back pretty close to, to our lot line, and it's, it's, there's stuff there already. The, from my perspective, it doesn't change our, our view. It doesn't change kind of how we perceive that house. I would almost rather have it be wider than go back further, you know? If I had to, if they were to add the same amount of square feet without making it that wide, they would just have to take more of the backyard. And the, the Paquin's house that he referenced to the north is a new construction, and I know that they hit their fair, their fair number or far number right on the money. So, that, that is taking up like sixty-three percent of the lot, and most of the other houses are, you know, in the forties and fifties. So, I don't know what you're hitting, actually, on yours, but I don't think, our lots are all pretty big, so that's, that's all I had. Any questions? Do I take questions, or, sorry, I don't know?
Oh, you can take questions if you'd like.
Sure, I would take questions from anyone.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Bunton? And we, actually, Corporation Council pulled up on Google Maps, the, your exact location. We could see how the difference between your yard, your, where your building and the petitioner's building is, is definitely, there's a lot more space between the petitioner and the building to the north.
Correct.
However, he's going to have the two-story addition to look at.
I would have the two-story addition, which I already have. You know, the, the garage already is there, it's just going to go out a little further. But yes, you're right.
And how long have you lived at your property, sir?
Uh, we've been there for fifteen years, and like I said, we did an addition about eleven years ago now. It was my grandmother's house, though, so it's been in my family since nineteen fifty-six.
Wow, oh, that's awesome. That's great. Cool. Any other questions for, for the gentleman? No? Thank you. Thank you for coming and speaking on the record and for this case. Anybody else that would like to get up and speak on the record? Good evening, sir.
Hi, Dave.
Yeah, please to the microphone.
This right here? No kidding.
No.
I'm Dave Fredrickson. I'm directly behind them on, on Central Park, ninety-four thirty Central Park.
So, you have those trees? You own the trees, then?
No. No, 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 that's, that's to the side.
That's the neighbor to the north.
Yeah.
It's the north, that's right here.
Yeah, so we're, we're east. We're directly east of them, so our backyard butts up against theirs.
Could you, could you spell your last name?
Yeah, sure, it's Fredrickson, F-R-E-D-E-R-I-C-K-S-O-N.
Just like it sounds.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I don't know if this will show, but, so we are, that's our house with the red dot. That's Jonathan's house. This is Nick and Taylor's house. Will the, will the, your addition go further back than?
It's almost the same.
It's almost identical. I actually printed that out.
It doesn't give me cover, that's where they have the patio right now.
Okay, well, that's, and that's what I was going to ask when you had the picture up of the patio, if it was going to go back beyond that.
It doesn't go beyond the patio. But it's like, what, maybe like a foot or something for that?
All right. My, my concern is only with.
Sir, sir, in the microphone, please.
It was in a band, too. You would think I would know that. My only concern is, is water. So, with the displaced lawn, I, we've had a lot of issues with other houses in the neighborhood having things done, and then we end up with all the water in our backyard. So, we had to put a French drain. So, I just, that's, was my only concern, is the footprint and.
And I can, I can speak to that as well, make sure that's clear.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Yeah, and so can Jonathan. Jonathan, we may have to recall the witness. He actually worked with the prior homeowner to put in drainage for that same reason. It speaks to the reason why we want to try and follow the width of the building and not go further back, because we want to maintain that open space behind our property. The way it's designed is, it, there's a little bit of a bump out for the living room. That is the furthest portion, which is approximately forty feet of a rear setback. There's about a four-foot inset for the rest of the addition, so we're almost at forty-four feet. There's over, doing the math in my head, twenty-three hundred square feet of open backyard space between the, between the furthest point of our addition and our rear property line. And again, as part of the program and doing the addition, we will be maintaining, and hopefully with the assistance of the architect, improving the on-site drainage with, whether it's a pop-up drain, a French drain, a combination. I mean, those are all things, frankly, we're not going to invest this money to then have it flood every time it rains. So, this is an opportunity for us to further help fix the problem, and already, again, Jonathan has been instrumental in installing drainage between our two yards to make sure that there isn't ongoing flooding every time it rains.
Yeah, it sounds like Mr. Fredrickson would appreciate that as well.
I'll, I'll jump in if you don't mind, again.
No, go ahead.
So, when we did our addition with Air Room, I, many of you may know, we were all supposed to have alleys in Skeviston, where we are. They're all plotted to have alleys, so all the backyards flow together, they're all the low point. We were lucky enough to be half an inch above, our lowest point was lucky enough to be half an inch above our street drain, which when we came to meet with you guys with Air Room, eleven years ago, you allowed us to put in a system where our gutters flow into a drain in the backyard, and that gets ejected forward. That serves their yard as well. We split the cost with the Horns, who were the previous neighbors that the Fatikas has bought from. So, there already is a pumping system. All of the yards have it. We have one of the better systems. I take pride in that. But it is an ongoing battle. I mean, still, you know, and when it's a big rain, we still flood for a few minutes. Luckily, our system drains it pretty quick, but to Nick's point, the further back you go, the worse that gets. They all flow down from there, so. I, I have faith that we will work together. You know, once our elevation changes, I'm sure things will shift around. I'm confident we'll be able to figure something out.
And if there are any issues, if this project goes forward in construction, you could always kind of take their civil engineering division with flooding concerns.
Did anybody else wish to speak yet? I see this gentleman walking forward to the podium, so let's go ahead and get his comments on the record. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, thank you.
Could you, could we have your name and spell it and, for the record? And tell us, tell us where your address is, too, please.
My name is Michael Inzitari. I-N-Z-I-T-A-R-I. I'm at ninety-four forty-four Monticello, which would be across the street and two houses to the north. I'm in support of this project, sitting through all the details as what you guys are doing, and concerns these neighbors more than me. You saw a number of emails that came in from the street. I can come on record to say that the Fatikas has have been very forthcoming to everybody in the street of what they're doing, what their plans are, and how they were doing it. So, you saw nothing unrejected, you know, any objections to their plan. I can't speak to those people, but I have not heard any, as that street is a cul-de-sac and pretty tight. So, that's about all I can say on the matter.
Okay. All right, great. Well, thank you so much. Thanks for coming and speaking on behalf of your neighbors.
So, I just, Ben, I'd like to call you to the witness stand because I'd like to have your testimony for the record on this subject. If this was required to be notched in, what changes would you need to make to the construction, and what would you view as potentially a negative to them?
Architecturally, in terms of, you know, going for what you're, what you're suggesting, there's two factors. The first being a constructibility issue. From a construction standpoint, it makes the most sense to begin the new construction where the old construction left off, you know, from a structural point of view and whatnot, to continue along those, those same lines. More importantly, it's an issue of the aesthetics. We want a, you know, it's an issue of design continuity. We want to provide a seamless transition between the existing construction and the new addition. While we recognize that this is an addition, we don't want it to look like one. We want it to be, you know, continuous throughout, and I think if we're able to, if we're able to continue along what's nearly the same, you know, building edge, then we'll be able to accomplish that.
Thank you, thank you. Brian, to ask you, in terms of the concerns that one of the neighbors expressed about flooding, can you comment on that? If there's anything that you could suggest, is there anything that we might want to make as a condition? If we.
In regards to flooding and this request?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
The request is for side yard setbacks. Request is not for impermeable surfaces and overage on coverage. They require, they meet the fifty percent requirement for impermeable surfaces. In regards to the building permit process, they're going to have to follow, you know, they're going to have to propose, due to the size of the addition, they're going to have to propose a grading plan, which civil engineering will review. Regardless, if the addition comes in, in or not, or stays at the same setback, engineering requirements and flooding requirements are going to stay the same.
So, yeah, so it's, in other words, it's not an issue, and it's not within our purview at this particular time, so. That, that being said, and if I may talk to Mr. West again here, the, like Commissioner Perlin was saying, that the, if we were not to approve this, this would just be basically for aesthetical reasons that this would be happening. I mean, I mean, you're, the main concern that you want to have the request granted is, is for aesthetic reasons. To continue on the existing, the existing walls.
That's one of a few reasons. One of the other concerns that's, was brought up by both Nick and I believe the neighbors was that we don't want to push this addition any further into the backyard than we have to, for both the, you know, permeable area issue, and then also just the impact to the neighbors. And I believe the one neighbor also mentioned that, in his, his point of view, the neighbor to the south, that it would be more preferable to keep the addition more shallow rather than, you know, that that was more of a critical issue than the width. So, we wanted to preserve that rear yard space for both of those reasons as well, and we feel if we were, if we were to squeeze in on the edges, that would be, that would be impossible.
Okay. Right, so, as, as we're mentioning here, if we were to keep it at the six-foot minimum and you pushed it in back, how, how much farther could you actually go back by right into the backyard? If, I mean, if you wanted to? I'll put it to you that way.
It's around an additional ten feet.
Yeah, so, and, so basically, you're, you're asking for the trade-off. Please give us the variation that you're requesting, we, and therefore, we won't, you know, go ten, an extra ten feet back into the backyard, but, which is your right to do.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing prohibit them from building another addition in the back and meeting the setback requirements, unless you put a condition that they can't build any more additions, but.
Right, well, there wouldn't be much leftover floor area to do that, but also, one of the things that I think may have just been skirted over was, is, as part of the, we'll call it justification or architectural reasoning is, there is a construction issue because